Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Just want to say thank you or welcome back to Counsel Fedeve. He had a little bit of a fall and it's good to have him back. And our thoughts and prayers is out to Dana. His mom passed away just before Mother's Day there, so let's all think about him while he'll probably be traveling back tomorrow. So we're going to open the meeting. Counsel Crick's going to do a short prayer.
Hardly thank you for this day. Thank you for spring finally being here. Pray your blessing on the M.D. and all the residents and the staff. We pray for Dana Swagert and his family as they're mourning the loss of his mom. And just pray that you give us wisdom today in our meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counsel Crick. Any additions to the agenda? Yep, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion, please, to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion for...
Thank you, Counsel. Subject makes a motion to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, I need adoption of the man as regular meeting of council April 27, 2022. Counsel Crick makes the motion that he adopts the regular meeting of council April 27, 2022. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? Any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. We're going to jump into 9.2L. Yep. He's got to leave on a conference.
I think Mr. Reeve went with counsel.
Somebody didn't do their mic check this morning.
I'll turn the voting over to Mr. Bespelko, who will watch and...
I don't know.
Testing.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning. We didn't want to hear from Al anyway, so go right ahead.
Before counsel today is a request for decision for bylaw 1800, the 2022 tax rate bylaw. Following discussions of the April 2022 council, our committee of the whole meeting, administration hereby presents the 2022 tax rate bylaw. Section 353 of the MGA requires municipal councils to annually pass a bylaw to raise revenues to be used towards the payment of municipal expenditures and transfers defined in the budget and the requisitions. At the April 20th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, council reviewed and discussed the requirements from Alberta Municipal Affairs to comply with the five-to-one tax ratio for the highest non-residential property tax rate and the lowest residential tax rate. Three tax rate scenarios were presented and the committee approved the recommendation of municipal tax rate, which establishes a five-to-one non-residential to residential tax ratio using the 2021 non-residential rate. This scenario defines a new residential tax rate of 2.9. This represents a 4.8% increase in comparison to last year's residential tax rate of 2.7663. A dollar impact analysis of this increase would be a $67 increase in the municipal portion of a residential tax notice of a $500,000 property, and the formulas in the RFD. The proposed 2022 tax rates by assessment class are as follows: residential, 2.9; farm, 5; non-residential vacant, 14.5; non-residential small business, 11.6; non-residential other, 14.5; non-residential asterix, that is the former ID 349, 10.15; machinery and equipment, 14.5; and machinery and equipment asterix, that's also in the ID, former ID 349, 10.15. And the ID 349, just for refresher, we have to comply with the order in council. Reference to provincial federal legislation, the MGA, their sections 310, 353, and 358.1. Administration recommends, recommended actions is that bylaw 1800 be, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87, to authorize the rates of taxation to be levied against accessible property within the municipality be given first reading; that bylaw number 1800 be given second reading; that council proceed to a third and final reading for bylaw number 1800; and that bylaw, bylaw number 1800 be given third reading. Council options are that bylaw 1800 be given, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, to authorize rates of taxation to be levied against accessible properties within the municipality, be given first reading, and proceed to second reading. Option two is that bylaw 1800, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, to authorize the tax, the rates of taxation to be levied against accessible properties within the municipality, not be given first reading, thus defeated. Option three is that bylaw 1800 being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, to authorize the rates of taxation to be levied against accessible properties within the municipality be amended by and given first reading. And final option, that bylaw number 1800 being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, to authorize the rates of taxation to be levied against the accessible properties within the municipality be tabled until a future date for more information.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, it's, it's, we knew it was coming, and the five-to-one ratio is something that we don't really have control over, but this isn't, this is not as bad as what maybe it sounds. I'll make that motion to, for option number one, give first reading.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Scarsen makes a motion that bylaw number 1800, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87, to authorize the rates of taxation to be levied against accessible properties within the municipality be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counsel Krevjak?
Thank you. We didn't have to go to five-to-one ratio as of this next year, did we? Just...
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and the members of council, through the reef to Counsel Krevjak. No, we did not have to, but we did receive a letter from the minister encouraging us, and it's my position that likely in the very near future, we'd have been forced to, and it's much easier to make that transition when it's voluntary and we can work with the numbers than when we're being forced into it by provincial legislation.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? Looking for a motion for second reading?
I'll make the motion for second reading.
Thank you. Counsel Subject makes the motion that bylaw number 1800 be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? Now we need, the council proceeds a third and final reading for bylaw number 1800?
Yeah, should we wait for a third reading and give it a week, or do we do all three readings on a bylaw and can just, because I think it's been practiced to hold off for a little bit?
Well, we, we did, we did discuss this in, at council, the whole, in pretty depth, so we, I don't know.
You'd have to make a motion to go into third reading first, before third reading.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Mr. Reeve?
Sorry.
If I could add, typically, it's been our practice to not do three readings on a bylaw in one sitting. However, just for council and for timing purposes, if the bylaw is passed today, that allows us to complete the 2023 budget, which we'll come back to council at the next council meeting, we'll have our final numbers. This is kind of the last piece of the puzzle of the 2023 budget. If council elects to not pass the bylaw today, we would be bringing back third reading at the next council meeting, which would put off the final budget until the first meeting in June. This is, this is the final piece. That's why we're recommending all three readings, just so we can get moving ahead with the final passage of the budget.
Yeah, Counsel Krevjak?
Yeah, I'll move that we go into third reading.
Okay. Counsel Krevjak moves that council proceed to third and final reading for bylaw number 1800. All in favor? Carrie, and I need a third reading. Counsel Crick moves that bylaw number 1800 be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
I guess we're on to number eight.
And through the chair, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, with regrets, I will have to leave the meeting in the, in the general manager, Matt Yon's, his hands for the rest of the day. I have another out-of-town, out-of-town conference that I need to be attending. So thank you and have a great day.
Yeah, you as well. We might be cheering on it as he's going out the door. Yay! Safe travels there, Al. Okay, 8.1. Come on up. Sorry to make you wait.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is development permit application 2022-D-051 for Robert Bremner. The applicant is applying for a renewal of a family care unit for Jocelyn Bremner. The property is located southwest of Highway 55 and 897. Adjacent properties are a quarter section and industrial parcels and remnant. The applicant would like to renew a family care unit for his mother, Jocelyn Bremner. Permit 2020-D-039 was issued in May 2020 for the same use. A letter confirming this need for, by her primary care provider was submitted. The park model does not conform with the land use bylaw setback from Highway 897, but an Alberta transportation permit was issued with the variance allowed. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on April 2nd, 2022, and we received no response. Recommendation for application 2022-D-051 is approve the request for a family care unit as a discretionary use, as per Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 72.2 of the land use bylaw, with the following conditions: the expiry on this permit to be December 31, 2022. The permit is valid for the care of Jocelyn Bremner only. The unit shall be removed once it is no longer required.
Yeah, Counsel Fedeve?
Yeah, we've seen this permit in the past, and I'd like to make the motion for option one, to extend the, the use of the family care unit.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Fedeve. Oops, sorry, Deputy Reeve Fedeve. He makes a motion that council approves development permit application number 2022-D-051 as a family care unit within northeast of 1463, 3 west of the 4th, and as discretionary use presumed to Part 6, Section 46 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 7.2 of the land use bylaw for Robert Bremner, as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. So I guess we can go to 9.3, Planning and Community Services?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, counsel. I'll be presenting on behalf of Community Services, as everybody's way on conference. So attached here, we have the RFD for the quest for sponsorship. So the Bonneville Ag Society will, has submitted a request to the M.D. Bonneville for sponsorship funding in the amount of $3,500 for gold sponsorship package to use towards their community pancake breakfast at the upcoming World Truck Wagon races and pro rodeo event on June 2nd to 5th, 2022. The BSA submitted further requests to the M.D. for in-kind contribution consisting of two trailers, a corral panels, and well, as 30 picnic tables for these events. The BSA was informed by administration that they could apply for the policy, 3C.012, the community action grant policy, under the events program level for sponsorship, up to the $5,000. However, they declined and wish to proceed with the request to council. So in the, in 2021, council did approve $3,500 sponsorship to the two BSA events, the Canadian Professional Rodeo Association in June, and then the World Professional Truck Wagon Association event in September, as well as in-kind request to use one trailer, corral panels, and 30 picnic tables. So attached are appendix A is the letter from the Bonneville Ag Society, and B is the letter request in kind for the contribution of corral panels and picnic tables.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fedeve?
Yeah, Director Kryant, do you know why they just decided to not follow the procedures that we have in place? There was no indication we're going to deny this. I mean, it was, we've done, you know, we've helped them in the past, and the indication we're still going to help them.
Not, not to my knowledge. I'm not aware of why they chose to decline going through the policy, because they would have been approved through the policy.
Great.
They wanted to come to council for the request. I don't know much of the details, but...
Does anybody know? No?
They never. I talked to the, I never talked to rodeo, but I talked to the grounds, right, when I first got elected, we had a little meeting there, but never mentioned, and that has nothing to do with them anyway.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, there's channels to go to, and I think we have those in place to, for it to work, and I, you know, I think we do this for this person, then everybody else is going to bypass the policy and go directly to us, and that's why we, we have the policy in place, but it's up to council, but I, I'd like to send them back to, I guess, be option two.
So if we go back to option two, that we approve the, the $3,500, and then also fund it out of the operating budget. If we do keep the option one, that will still keep in with the policy.
With the policy, that's what it is? Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be option one.
Sorry, that'd be option one, yeah. I mean, is there, like, is there like a timeline? Is that why they're asking for it? Their time seems to be okay.
Well, through the reef to Counsel Fedeve, the timeline right now is okay, but I think if we push this to future council meetings, the timeline will be very tight. So I think a decision today will have to be made.
Okay.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll do the mo, yeah, go ahead, counsel.
Counsel, Counsel Krevjak, yes? Okay. Thank you, Counsel Krevjak, for making the motion that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville Agricultural Society to apply through the municipal community action grant program for financial and in-kind support on, of their upcoming Canadian Professional Rodeo Association event in June 2022. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen. I think we're going to 9.41. Mr. Bespelko?
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
I am here today with the RFD for policy number 4A.001, road construction and development policy amendment. At the April 202022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, policy number 4A.001, road construction and development policy amended, was presented for review. After the presentation and discussion, the committee passed a motion recommending to council, or recommending that council adopt the amended policy 4A.001, road construction and development policy as presented. Attached as appendix A is the amending draft for policy 4A.001, road construction and development policy. And the recommended action is that council adopts policy number 4A.001, road construction and development policy as amended.
Thank you. Counsel Krevjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. There's nothing in this policy that says construction of roads for access to farmers?
Through the reef to Counsel Krevjak's question, yeah, we, in section nine, you can see that, that council may approve projects that are not included in the long-term construction that are in the best interest of the M.D. and/or the public, and meet the following criteria. So if there is a road that is of benefit to the M.D. and/or the public, it can be added as per this clause in the, in the policy. What we did was, we removed the section of supplemental road construction, because there was a, there was, in the old, in the, in the policy, there's a percentage of our budget tied directly to that. We removed that so that we're not obligated every year to, to put that 10% into that supplementary road construction, but that doesn't, it didn't eliminate the, the option for council to bring back any type of construction like you're talking about, that has to have an access for a farmer, a developer, anything like that. So under section nine, that would be included at a council discretion to add to the policy, or to add to the construction list. But we're not obligated through policy to do that every year for 10% of our, our construction budget.
So, Mr. Reeve, if, if a farmer needs access, we can say it's going to benefit the M.D. then? Otherwise, that, that won't hold water?
Through the reef to Counsel Krevjak, the way it's worded, it says, "the best interest of the M.D. and/or the public." So if it's, if it's of best interest to the public, which could be a farmer to access that...
Could it, could be anybody?
It could be anybody. So that's why we worded it that way, so if it's, if it's in the best interest of the M.D. and/or the public, if it's in the best interest of that person to have it, we should be, it, it's okay to, and, and council approves it, it would fall under this policy.
Okay, thank you. One more question, Mr. Reeve. I just forgot between a thought here. I'll just, just, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that for approaches specifically, we do have a separate policy, and it does, again, specifically address agricultural approaches.
And just approaches? I understand that. Yeah, the, the other thing is, you have here in this policy about people paying a part of the construction of a road.
Okay.
So I don't, we've never, ever had that in the M.D. I'm just wondering why we would want the people to pay for part of the construction of a road?
Through the reef to Counsel Krevjak's question, that's 9D you're referring to? Yep. So we can approve it if the landowner has offered to finance the construction, or the landowner has offered to provide other non-monetary considerations. So that's a 9C and D. That's not a criteria, but if they come to council and say, "Look, we need this road built, and we'll pay for it," if they offer that, that's not to say that we're demanding that they pay for that. This policy offers that if they come to council and, and want to pay for it, it gives us the option to build it at their cost.
So it's only if they offer to pay?
Yeah, it's, that's the way it's worded. C is the landowner has offered, and D is the landowner has offered.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Reeve Fedeve?
Yeah, I think it all makes sense here. Just my concerns are with, with developers, that, you know, that can buy property at, you know, 20 cents to the dollar, because it's not accessible now, and then they're, you know, demanding of the M.D. to build them a road, because it's half a mile down the road, and it, you know, could be going through some soft areas, and now, all of a sudden, it's going to cost us a million dollars. And because of the policy, it says that we have to, well, how's that going to work, right? So, you know, those are my concerns. You know, developers are there to make money, and I think if they want a road, they, they should pay for it, right? So it's, those are my concerns about...
The old policy?
Yeah, right? So again, it's not about farmer access, and, you know, I mean, this is about people making money off property that they can do, so...
Very good, very good points. Okay, just looking for a motion then, gentlemen? Yes, Counsel Crick, you make the motion? Okay, thank you. Counsel Crick makes a motion that council adopts policy number 4A.001, road construction and development policy as amended. Any other discussion? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Yeah, thank you. 951, that's, goes to you.
We're going to call up the new manager of Legislative Services to present the next few policy changes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So first, we have policy 2A.005, motor vehicle uses policy. This policy came up for scheduled review in 2022, and upon review, it was found that further action was required. There's really no content inside the policy, so there's, it's really not doing anything. We do already have a formal procedure in place for vehicle operations, and so we do feel like that procedure is adequate without requiring this policy to be in place. So as such, we are proposing to rescind the policy. The Committee of the Whole reviewed this proposal to rescind the policy on April 20th, and are recommending that council approve the rescinding of the policy. So our recommended action is that council approves rescinding policy number 2A.005, motor vehicle uses policy, as recommended.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, we rescind policy 2A.005.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Subject, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves rescinding policy number 2A.005, motor vehicle use policy. Any discussion? Counsel Krevjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So why don't we just keep this policy anyway?
Because it doesn't do anything, there's no content. There's no policy statement in it.
Okay.
There's no policy direction inside the document, so right now, it really does nothing, except have a statement saying that we have a procedure.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. 952?
Next is policy numbers 2A.0081 and 2A.0082, personal protective equipment policies. Again, these policies came up for scheduled review in 2022, and upon review of the policy, again, it was found that both of these policies are more in line with administrative procedure and address operational and human resources matters. So as such, administration is proposing to rescind these policies and create a CAO directive similar in nature instead. In December of 2021, council did pass the Human Resources Management Policy, which identifies the M.D. Human Resources Handbook as the tool for implementation of guiding principles for the management of human resources within the municipality. And then additionally, the Municipal Government Act and the M.D. CAO bylaw specify that the roles and responsibilities of the CAO include the oversight of municipal staff and operations. Since these two policies are concerning an internal process primarily affecting municipal staff, administration feels this document would be more appropriate as a directive. The Committee of the Whole reviewed the proposal to rescind these policies on April 20th, and are recommending that council rescind these policies.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion? Okay, thank you, Counsel Scarsen, on behalf of council, that council approves rescinding policy number 2A.0081, personal protective equipment policy, safety boots, and policy number 2A.008, number two, personal protective equipment policy coveralls. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. On to 953?
Next, we also have policy number 2B.011, debit and credit card refunds policy. So on January 12, 2022, council approved partial refunds for lift tickets sold for Canusu Ridge's 2021 and 2022 ski season. This decision prompted a review and requirement to amend policy number 2B.0011 to include the Canusu Ridge tickets as a transaction eligible for refunds. During this review, it was found that the primary intention of this policy is more in line with administrative procedure. is more in line with administrative procedure. As such, administration is proposing to rescind this policy and create a municipal procedure similar in nature instead. The Committee of the whole reviewed this proposal to rescind policy number two B zero one one on April 11th and are recommending that council rescind the policy.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion, please. Option one, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau. Make a motion on behalf of council that council approves rescinding policy number two B zero one one, debit and credit card refunds policy. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. On to nine five four?
Uh, the MD Committee of the whole terms of reference. At the February 16th, 2022 Committee of the whole meeting, uh, Councilor Fedeau was appointed as the committee co-chair in accordance with the current terms of reference, which were adopted by council on November 12th, 2021. At this meeting, the committee also gave direction for administration to amend the terms of reference with regards to the co-chair position. So administration has drafted and amended terms of reference attached as appendix A. The amendment in, um, eliminates the requirement to appoint a court, a co-chair annually and instead indicates that a temporary chair will be nominated at a meeting in the event that the chair is unable to attend. If council approves this amendment, the Committee of the whole at their next meeting will need to rescind their previous motion appointing Councilor Fedeau as a co-chair, as this position would no longer be required. The Committee of the whole rev- uh, reviewed this amendment on April 20th and are recommending that council adopt the amended document as presented.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion? Okay, I'll move that. Okay, thank you, uh, Council Crick for making a motion on be- behalf of council that council adopts the MD Committee of the whole terms of reference as amended. Any discussion on this? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine five five?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So next is Regional Sport Tourism Committee. Um, so there was an expressed interest to the MD of Bonneville to create a regional sport tourism committee. The intention of the committee would be to collaborate in the effort to attract large sporting events to a region and would be created using a mix of, uh, both elected officials from each participating municipality and members at large from the region. So in the discussion, administration is recommending drafting up a terms of reference for this committee, which would detail scope, jurisdiction, local authority, as well as administration would recommend reaching out to the adjacent municipalities and have further discussions regarding the effect- effectiveness of this idea and how, using seed money. Uh, seed money would likely be required from each municipality. The terms of reference would only be a draft document to act as a starting point in discussion with our regional partners. This committee would actively promote the region and increase economic development, potentially through increased visibility provincially and potentially nationally. The Committee of the whole reviewed this proposal on April twenty, 20th, 2022 and are recommending that council direct administration to arrange a meeting with the three neighboring urban municipalities regarding the inf- or the formation of the Regional Sports Tourism Committee and to further direct administration to create a draft terms of reference for the com- committee for council approval at a future meeting. So, um, so what we're looking for today is that, um, council just directs administration to arrange a meeting with the city of Cold Lake, the town of Bonneville, and the village of London regarding the formation of the Regional Sports Tourism Committee, and then furthermore directs the administration to create a draft terms of reference for the Regional Sports Term or Tourism Committee and bring it back to a future meeting for council for approval.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion. I'm excited to see this. Uh, get all three Ree- all three municipalities involved. It's good.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to arrange a meeting with the city of Cold Lake, town of Bonneville, the village of London regarding the formation of the Regional Sports Tourism Committee and furthermore directs administration to create a draft terms of reference for the Regional Sports Tourism Committee and bring it back to a future meeting of council for approval. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you. Nine five six?
The next one would be, the Royal Mounted Police RCMB with the Bonneville Victim Services.
With the Bonneville Victim Services, we'll be hosting regimental ball in September and are requesting support from the MD. Um, so in the letter of support, uh, the for- this formal event will include a grand march, piper, dinner and dance, and will also host a live as well as a silent auction. Proceeds raised from the event will go to Bonneville Victim Services unit. And the options of the support is a, um, monetary or item donations for the live and/or silent auction, tabletop sponsorship, which gives tabletop recognition for $300, purchase of individual tickets to attend the event at $100 ticket, or purchase of either eight or 10-person tables for the event for $800 or $1,000 per, uh, per person. Purchase of an eight-person table plus a tabletop sponsorship for a different table. That'd be about $1,050. So, attached is the letter.
Deputy Reeve Reeve?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, do a request to go on camera on, on legal basis.
Okay. Have a motion to go on camera? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. We're on nine five six, uh, just looking for a motion, uh? Any discussion yet on how many tables we're gonna?
So, uh, Mr. Reeve, we need, uh, two tables, I would think, of eight, right? So I can make the motion for two tables of eight, if that's?
I think it was eight or 10.
But there's, uh, 16 of us, I would think, would be, but.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Reeve, if I may, um, they have lots of funding options, so the, the possibilities are endless. Um, you could do, uh, just two tables of eight. Um, they also offer an option to do, um, a table of eight with a tabletop sponsor, which is slightly less than paying for each one individually. Um, so if you wanted to do two tables of eight, you could do one with, one table of eight with the tabletop and then just one separate table of eight, or you can just get two separate tables of eight. Said, there's many, many options here.
How can we do this and leave it, uh, up to you guys to make the after?
Um, if you want to do just the two tables of eight, you could do the, you just use the recommended action indicating, um, instead of using a table, you're purchasing two tables of eight um, in the amount of $1,600.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, my fault. So that'd be option two.
Option two?
Yeah, I think that's what Council Kreviak said.
You're okay with that, Mike? Okay, thank you, uh, Council, uh, Kreviak. Sorry, I'm trying to read it. Uh, he makes a, a motion on behalf of council, uh, you're going with option number two, uh, Crick? That council approves purchasing two tables for, of eight, uh, for the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, RCMB Regimental Ball to be held on September 17th, 2022 in the amount of $1,600 to be funded from the 2022 operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Nine six?
So next, uh, for council, we do have a couple invitations. The first invitation being the London graduation on June 25th.
Would anyone like to take that graduation? Yeah, okay. What, what day? June 25th?
I've, uh, I've been going for the last, like, 12 years, so nice to have, so, you know? So I'll make a motion, uh?
Do we need a motion for that, or yes, we do?
Let Reeve Kalinsky go to the London grad?
I was there a couple times, Council Kreviak.
One second, what is Notre Dame's, uh, graduation?
Remembrance Day.
What? It's right away, right? Okay, yeah, I can do this one.
I was there, correct?
I'll tell you why.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
No.
Uh, just the recommended action.
You can just make one motion.
Okay, and then for the town of?
Yeah, so, so the next invite would be on behalf of the council of the town of Bonneville are pleased to invite the upcoming Queen's Platinum Jubilee Flag Raising Ceremony and High Tea being held at the town, Bonneville Administration Office in Bonneville on May 20th, beginning at 1:00 PM. So this is just to celebrate the Queen's 70 years of service. So.
Yeah, I don't know if I can make that one. Is anyone else would like to attend?
Yeah, if you can't make it, I'll, uh, I'll go with it.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve, uh, Fedeau. Okay, so now, um, we need a motion, please? Yep. Council Crick? Okay, thank you, uh, Council Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves attending the, to the presented events as following, Glenin School Commencing Ceremony, June 25th, 2022, to be attended by myself, Reeve Kalinsky, and to the Town of Bonneville Queen's Jubilee Flag Raising Ceremony and High Tea on May 20th, 2022, gonna be attended by Deputy Reeve Fedeau. Any discussion on this? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Nine six one? No, don't need?
Okay, so, next is the correspondence information. So in front of council, there is all the correspondence for the past couple weeks. And the council action report is at the bottom also. Is there anything coming from these that council would like to discuss?
Yes, uh, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Uh, man, I'm probably asking the wrong guy for this. Uh, in regards to, uh, Tabor and the, uh, invitation to do the thing with the, uh, I guess, friendship beyond borders as far as the Japanese thing? Uh, how does that, what, how does that work? Uh, is there any kind of economic benefit, uh, with this or not?
Um, I did have a chance to read over that letter from the town of Tabor asking for any other municipalities that if they do have a sister city or sister town in Japan, or if, if there is, uh, any interest in any municipalities to also do this. Um, again, I'm not familiar with this, but we can definitely get some more information. The conference is coming up, June 3rd and 4th. Um, I believe in Tabor. And if, uh, council so wishes, we could get some more information on this and to bring it back to, to council and, and maybe if there's interest in?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I say, maybe not for this year, but maybe for next year. It sounds interesting. We can, uh, do some sort of economic development with them. Uh, maybe as far as a trade partner goes, I, I don't know where it's gonna go.
Okay.
We can give them some grain, they give us some rice.
So if, if council does wish to do that, if we could have just a motion just to direct, uh, administration to bring back further information and, uh, for future?
Yeah, I'll make that motion for, bring back, uh, for, bring back more information for future consideration. Sounds, sounds interesting.
On which number, Ben? 10.5?
So that was, uh, uh, 10.5.
10.5?
Yeah.
So we're just gonna make a separate motion on the 10.5? Run it by us one more time, uh, Council Fedeau, or are you writing something up right now, Julie? Yeah, okay, we'll just wait a minute.
Yeah, just to bring back more information.
Yeah. We'll just see what it requires.
So, Mr. Reeve, reception is the same time as the FCM, uh, also, so for this year, yeah.
Just while she's writing that up, I just wanted to mention, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the first letter there was a letter from the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting, which was given to the MD of Bonneville, so just, uh, congratulations, a good job on all the staff that worked on that.
Thank you.
Yes, the finance team did, it awarded that, and it was great work by, uh, the whole group in the finance department, so, great job.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by, uh, Deputy Reeve Fedeau that council directs administration to bring back further information on item 10.5, email from the town of Tabor, invitation to the annual Alberta-Japan Twin Municipalities Conference to a future meeting of council as directed. Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this? Yeah, no, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Also looking for a motion to, um?
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I'd like to bring up also as well, 10.8, uh, declare seniors week of June 6th to 12th, 2022, and acknowledge all the seniors in our community.
Thank you. Uh, looking for a motion that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through 13. Anyone wants to make that motion? Thank you, Council Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through 13. Any discussion on this? Seeing not all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. What time we got there? I think we're just gonna do the, we, we don't have a closed session? No?
Have to declare seniors week?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That Council Slipchuk mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And then also, Mr. Reeve, uh, there's a 10.11 about the, uh, invitation to a golf tournament as well, we have to discuss.
Okay.
Those two items.
Can we just wait a second and bring up Norm, because I told him to come at 10? So we can, uh, we'll do those right after.
Have a break now?
Yeah, we can have a break for a few seconds and then we'll address those after and Norm can come up.
Sure.
On behalf of Hang in the 30s. So let's take a 10-minute break. It's going pretty fast. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Uh, we're gonna have a delegation from Hang in the 30s now. Norm and Lisa, come on up.
Good morning, Reeve and council. This is Norm Thiru, I am Lisa Vandenberg, and we are part of Hang in the 30s Cancer Support Society. We are approaching council today for, uh, donation, and, uh, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our organization. In 1999, Hang in the 30s was founded to help people in the local area who were stricken with cancer. Hang in the 30s is all about culture and the history of our ancestors portrayed by recreating the past via our living museum over the course of a two-day event held annually. The event consists of special attractions. Julie, can I get you to just run the gallery, please?
Yep. On the overhead screen, we do have some pictures of past events, of things that have happened, just to give you an idea of, of what our event is like and what our event is about. So the event consists of special attractions, fieldwork and construction demonstrations, fall harvest demos, sawmills, and wagon rides. Not to mention the historical experience gained with each of the buildings on site. These buildings include a general store, trading post, blacksmith shop, leather works, and much more. There are too many exciting demonstrations and goings-ons to mention in this brief introduction. There are, there is something for people of all ages to enjoy, whether it be elders reminiscing of the past. reminiscing of the past or youngsters taking part in one of our live demonstrations. Hang in the Thirties is held once a year on the August long weekend, Saturday and Sunday in Lake, Alberta. This year's event will fall on July thirtieth and thirty-first. This function has grown every year and now extends to help residents of Alberta into Saskatchewan and B C. Over two hundred volunteers helped to put the event together. Regular work bees are held each Wednesday night at seven P M. between late May onward to the event itself. We have a core group who continue to work on projects throughout the year, bringing in buildings to be re-resurrected or equipment that needs some special T L C, or simply prepping the grounds to accommodate our next event. In twenty, pardon me, two thousand and one, we obtained eighty acres of leased land from the County of St. Paul Number Nineteen at no charge. They also donated a camp kitchen that became our original cook shack and has since been upgraded and added on to better serve our visitors. The weekend consists of free cowboy camping, free Saturday lunch, free beef on a bun for Saturday supper, and a no-admission-free old-fashioned hoedown Saturday night, then ramps right back up again Sunday morning for a donated pancake breakfast. Our last event saw approximately fifty-five hundred people attend over the weekend. Twenty-two hundred of those people were fed the supper Saturday night, and another thousand attended breakfast on Sunday morning. Hang in the Thirties is strictly a nonprofit registered society that operates on a volunteer basis. Expenses for the event are covered by volunteers and sponsors within the northeastern Alberta area. There is no charge for the public to attend the event. We take donations only, with the money raised, one hundred percent is used to help cancer victims with some of their expenses as they undergo treatments. Our last event raised over two hundred thousand dollars in just two days. Since we began, we have helped over six thousand cancer victims. We began this organization knowing that we did not have a cure for cancer, but instead thought we could at least help some, ease some of the financial burden that every individual faces when battling this disease. At this time, we are approaching the council of the M D of Bonneville, requesting a monetary donation of fi-of ten thousand dollars per year and thirty yards of gravel to be delivered to our site for the next five years. I will now open up the, um, for any questions you may have that Norm would be delighted to answer.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
I'm, uh, I'm glad part of the ask is not for me to play fiddle. Uh, it's, that would've been a disastrous event. Uh, yeah, it's, it's so awesome to see. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think we should support him, and definitely, yeah, I think we have enough gravel.
I think so, you know? They maybe could've asked for a little more. I don't think we would've denied them. I've, uh, anybody else? Yeah, Counsel Criviek?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, I've attended this and I did a pancake breakfast there one year as well, and it's a great event, and, uh, it's for a very good cause, of course. So, yeah, I do support this myself. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, uh, one of the best events we have in our area. I'd have to, for cancer support, and, uh, I seen both of these people on work, at work, I guess, and they're, uh, amazing individuals, uh, that, uh, when you see these two at work at Hang in the Thirties, uh, they, they come every Wednesday night, uh, these two, and they, almost every Wednesday night, all the way up to the event, and they work, uh, they have a bee every Wednesday night, and they work their butts off, and, uh, along with a lot of other people as well. So, uh, there is a lot of volunteers in our whole area that put a lot of time and effort into this, and, uh, this is a very good thing. We should support this. Has Counsel Crick though?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good event, too, and I'll make the motion that we, um, accept their presentation as information and re, basically the number one here, that's the recommended action, and they don't come back to council with more information, right, from staff?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Crick, for making the motion on behalf of council that council accepts the presentation by Hang in the Thirties Cancer Support Society, requesting, uh, commitment on ongoing financial and donation support as information, and furthermore, that council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding their requests to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any other discussions? Has Counsel Fadiev?
Uh, I don't know. I don't, is there a reason why we need to bring this back? It's fairly simple. They want ten thousand for next little while, and they want some gravel. I don't know what there is to, to discuss.
Yes, Matt?
Um, yeah, administration has no problem, um, approving this. It could just probably be a little neater for administration to have it prepared where the money's coming from and how to set it up annually as the request for going forward, and then also having the, prepared for the gravel. So it's either way, however council wants to do it today. Um, it'll just be maybe a little neater if we have a little time to prepare.
I don't think this will hinder you if we make a decision next council meeting on this? No. All right. All right. Is that okay, everyone?
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Good point, though, Counsel, Deputy Reeve. Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Great job.
We would also like to take this opportunity to invite each of you to attend our event this year on July thirtieth and thirty-first, and if you feel like being handyman, we will be there Wednesday nights at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, fiddle? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Now I know where that's coming from. All right, what did I forget to do? There was something I was supposed to...
Declare.
Declare? Yeah. Where is that at? Nine point what? Ten point eight? Ten point eight?
Yeah.
What's that? Oh, yeah. I'll just stand for that. In honor of the past, present, and future contributions of the seniors of this community and throughout Alberta, I hereby declare June sixth to the twelfth, two thousand twenty-two to be seniors week in, um, our M D of what? All right. Thank you. You guys will bring that to me after, to sign? Yeah? And what else, what else were you supposed to do? Sorry?
Was ten point eleven.
Ten point eleven?
I, I'm just, I, I think we need a motion by council approving, declaring this as a, as seniors week.
Okay. Sorry.
I'll make a motion declaring, uh, June sixth to June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, seniors week in the Municipal District of Bonneville.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Criviek, for making this motion. Any, sorry. Counsel Slipcheck? You can throw those at me. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? Ten point eleven?
But, uh, Mr. Reeve, according to Stephanie, there's no request for monies and stuff, right?
So right now, this is more just information. If you think you might be interested in attending, to save the date, uh, we're still waiting on more and for more details to bring back to council, hopefully on May twenty-fifth, um, for you guys to make a motion to approve attendance, if you so please.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, council action reports? Yeah?
I believe there was one other...
Sorry.
Ten point, uh, one-one was the R M A Golf Tournament invitation...
Sorry, guys.
That Counsel Criviek mentioned.
Oh, yeah, my fault again.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay, sorry. Sleeping on the wheel.
That's the one we just, right, we're gonna put it off to the twen, yeah.
Okay.
It's all right. I made two mistakes. You only made one, so you're good. Counselor Action Report, whoever wants to speak first, go ahead.
I'll go ahead here.
Sorry, number eleven? That's, we're tied now. No, I'm ahead, three to one. Who wants to go first? Yeah, Counsel Crick, go ahead.
All right, uh, on the twenty-eighth, we had a F C S S lunch, and Mike M C. That did a great job. Thank you, Mike, for that. It was a bunch honoring the volunteers and a V I P, Volunteers Are Important People lunch. Uh, then we also had a waterline commission meeting that day, and there, the waterline, the staff are working on developing a policy for people to tie into the waterline system, which was good. Was able to attend the day of mourning, uh, safety meeting at the M D shop, so it was interesting. Yeah, and at F C S S, we had our meeting on Thursday, that evening as well, and we made a motion there to do what we can to support Ukrainians fleeing the war, and we've all received an email since then about some of the stuff F C S S is doing, uh, in particular providing translations or volunteer translators to help with people that are needing language help assistance when they get here, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, next, Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, Counsel Criviek?
Yeah, I was also in the F C S S, uh, volunteer luncheon, uh, as you were as well, uh, and the mayor, and we had about thirty-six volunteers. Uh, the, uh, email from Director Beal with regards to helping, uh, and supports for Ukrainians displaced by the war, just wanna add to that, if I may. Uh, two staff met with the Healthy Communities Agency, who have received federal immigration funding, and they have an office in Bonneville. They're looking at engaging other community agencies, like the Chamber of Commerce and Service Canada, uh, to, in developing a range of support services. Supports will include volunteer translation supports, housing, building, fundraising, cash cards only, employment supports, mental health, and more. If you want any more information on this, you can also contact, uh, Director Beal from F C S S. As of the last meeting, I, we were told there were ten people from, uh, Ukraine that came to the Bonneville area, and one already has, has a job, so that's very good news. I also had a police committee meeting, presentations from the City of Cold Lake, Town of Bonneville, and M D, uh, Director of Public Safety, Mr. Gandolfi. There's still power issues in that public safety building. Hopefully they'll be resolved this week, I, I'm, I'm thinking. So that's good news. A lot of dog complaints, twenty-three dogs barking all over the place. Many speeding complaints in April. Uh, one person was clocked ninety clicks over the speed limit, so that's, uh, a fair amount. In Bonneville, R C and P, six hundred eighty-three files created, two hundred twelve were trafficked, sixty-four resulted in charges. Cold Lake had nine hundred forty-one, uh, files created in March, one thirty-nine were trafficked, and sixty-two resulted in, in charges. So the police are very, very busy and have, uh, a lot to do on their hands. I wanna thank them and the public safety for their service. Thank you.
Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, Counsel Criviek, just, just a quick question. So they did, they did get some funding to immigration?
The F C S S?
Yeah, no, it's the, uh, it's the other agency, you said?
Okay, it says here, uh, uh, they met with Healthy Communities Agency...
Yeah.
Uh, who have received federal immigration funding, and they have an office in Bonneville. Where the office is, I'm not really sure.
The office is, is over at, at Community Futures? That's where their office is?
Oh, yes, yeah.
But like, you know how much they...
No, I don't know. I, yeah, I can find out for you for next meeting.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they really stepped up, right? If the, uh, the federal government stepped up on that.
Yeah, they are, so that's good news.
I mean, is, is, is the funding, is it a thousand dollars, is it two, is it like, you know, is it a drop in the bucket? I mean, 'cause that's, that stuff's not gonna get them anywhere.
Well, I think it's more than a drop in the bucket, but I'll find out for you, yeah.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Awesome. Did you put your name in for, uh, for a translator?
Somebody put my name in, so, myself and, uh, former Emily Leskew and, uh, Counselor David Sharun, and, uh, one other person.
Elchuk?
Who?
John, was it John Elchuk?
No.
'Cause John was...
Well, he probably could too, yeah. Or maybe it was him. There was, there were four people.
John was talking to me about at the police thing?
Oh, maybe, yeah, yeah.
He was talking about getting hold of Guinea and, and you're right on.
So we're willing to, to help out with that, and, uh, so that's, that's good, yeah. Thank you very much, yeah.
Since my mic is on, I'll, uh, F, uh, F C S S meeting, I'd like to, uh, thank Reeve Brian for, uh, for being at the luncheon. Uh, yeah, the, uh, the M C kept calling Reeve Kalinsky Reeve Brian, so, uh...
It was okay. She, she said Brian well.
She, she stopped by my store and just wanted to, uh, extend her apologies again.
Oh, it's...
So, so we're good. So, yeah, so that was the first luncheon they've had in, uh, in a couple of years. I think it was well-received. Uh, F C S S meeting yesterday, uh, yeah, they're short-staffed, uh, you know, quite heavily, and, uh, that's about really it. Everything else is, uh, as, as business goes on, so, thank you.
I'd just like to add to Counsel Criviek's, uh, about the ten families being brought into our community, that on May nineteenth at St. Louis Parish Hall, from seven to eight-thirty P M., we can go and welcome Ukrainian families in. So I just want everybody to be aware of our community and that, that...
What day, what date is that again?
May nineteenth. That's seven till eight-thirty P M. at the St. Louis Parish Hall. And, uh, as per the past previous week, I had a pretty quiet week. Uh, I just had a Zoom meeting with Riverland, um, Recreation Trail Society, and they're moving forward with trails. They got a bunch of signs changed already on the trails, and, uh, they're looking to promote it more, and I believe we're gonna see good success and a lot of usage on that trail as long as, uh, going forward. That's all I've got to say.
Counsel Scarsen?
Yeah, I don't have much to report. It was, I had a library meeting that was business as usual, and, um, I will note, though, that it's also Nurses Week this week, so if you know a nurse, uh, say how much you appreciate, for sure, so.
Yeah, they're very important. I guess it's my turn, eh? F, F C S S, you guys did cover it well. Um, Mike, I just have Mike in quotations, that he did a great job emceeing. Uh, he really rocked it. So, yeah, the odd jokes, so he, Mike makes a, does a great job when he emcees. Um, also had a meeting with the City of Cold Lake, uh, with Mayor Copeland and the C O Nagoya. We were talking about, um, a little bit of annexation, uh, of the north quarters and maybe a little bit more. We had a good meeting here with them, uh, one day, and then the police committee meeting. Also wanna say thank you to all the R C and P in our area, and we had a good meeting, and, uh, also our staff as well. And that's about all I have, uh, so. Anything else, gentlemen? Just need someone to...
Yeah, just for that May nineteenth meeting, uh, I guess they wanted me to say a speech in, uh, bilingual language, so it'll be English and Ukrainian, not English and French. And Mrs. Leskew's supposed to be speaking as well...
Okay.
And I'm not sure if, uh, if he wanna speak or not. I'll, I'll get back to you.
Get back to me?
Thank you.
I, like, on April, um... Yeah, on, on, in April, um, I had a, one of the Ukrainians that, um, Ukrainian families that reached out to me when they came, and they, so I invited them to my place on the twentieth of, uh, April. So I got to meet a young couple with a little, uh, they have a little girl, so it was pretty cool. So I invited a couple Ukrainian-speaking, uh, people over, so it'd make them a little more comfortable, and, uh, they weren't too bad in English. They're better, their English is better than my Ukrainian, let's just put it that way, but it was nice to meet them, uh, uh, they're here, and they're gonna move to Cold Lake, and they ended up, uh, a doctor gave them a house here in Bonneville, just in, so that's nice.
Anything else? I guess I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Counsel Slipcheck. All those in favor? I got the right name there? Okay, good job, everybody.